All right, following the meeting's order, and I want to welcome all stakeholders. And let's hope you have a brief... One more part.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the people for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Brandy, absent. Susan?
Here.
David Beilin?
Here.
Jason?
Here.
Mayra?
Here.
Becky? Absent. David Lacher?
Here.
Lori?
Here.
Assad? Absent. Gabriel?
Here.
Isam?
Here.
And we have Paul. All right, thank you. No representatives of like officials, so you are on item number five, public comments that matter not on the agenda. Anybody who would like to make a public comment on a matter not on the agenda? If nobody does? Oh, she has.
Do I need one comment?
Why, I don't know, I have.
Does anybody know what those blue things are?
The what?
The blue things, I'm on the... Like Tom Williams at engineering...
That one there?
Oh, my hell. There's like a blue thing.
They look like they were containers. Storage containers.
I'm not making some of these up.
I will, uh... I'll take a look at it.
They're bit for bit, yeah.
Hello.
How?
Hello.
Hey.
How are you?
David? All right. Any public comment on matters not on the agenda? All right. Uh, item number six. Jason. So, let's see. You got it in here. Motion to approve the February M E R. We'll second it. Okay, any questions, any comments on the M E R? If anybody wants the backup receipts, they're in a board packet. I didn't include them in the individually members packets, but you can use them, they're all there. All right, any public comment on the M E R? All right. Comments, call the votes. All right, Brandy, absent. Susan?
Yes.
David Beilin?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Mayra?
Yes.
Becky is absent. David Lacher?
Here.
Lori?
Yes.
Assad is absent. Gabriel, yes, Isam?
Yes.
Motion passed. All right, thank you. Item seven, you have the treasurer's report.
No, I do want to talk about the class. You know, I went through the training and I wanted to mention that, you know, we need to do the bank card holder. So, I wanted to mention that to everybody so next meeting we'll vote on that. One of the things that we can also do is call it alternate signer. So, David is second signer, I'm a signer, but the alternate signer is a good idea, in my opinion, because that allows the paperwork to be signed off on when one of us are gone. So, that alternate, if David's gone, then I can sign with that alternate signer. So, think about if you'd be willing to do that. And then also the bank card holder is another thing that... Last, it used to be Andrew, but it doesn't necessarily need to be Andrew. It can be...
It doesn't need to be the treasurer.
Doesn't need to be.
It can't be Andrew, sorry.
Okay, that's all right. At least you don't have to. Yeah, it has been the treasurer in the past, but it can be any board member. And then the... So, I'll get access to the portal. I'm still waiting to get access to the portal. And we need to appoint the bank card holder. That's kind of holding things up for me to get into the portal. So, there's a paperwork, acknowledging paperwork that needs to be filled out. Anything else you want to mention from our class?
No, the only other thing was, I don't believe that the additional signer, they don't have to go through the class.
For the alternate signer? No. Though the bank card holder would have to, I believe, go through the funding course.
Yeah, we... I think they mentioned in class that they would prefer it to be the treasurer or the signer.
Yeah. And then the other thing that...
Comment on it for a question?
Let me just say one other thing. So, the other thing is regarding the reimbursements. I want to let you guys know, they said there's a $1,000 limit per person for reimbursement, so I'm not sure how much you guys have done. I know Gabriel, Isam, you might have had a few. But they're going to...
Limit it.
I don't know if you guys are aware of that, so I wanted to let you know.
Set the limit per month or per year?
Per year.
Per year?
Yeah.
So, one person?
Right.
$1,000, they can't do anything the rest of the year?
Yeah, there's a limit to board member reimbursements of $1,000, and I wanted to bring that to everybody's attention.
But we're confident it's $1,000 per year?
Per year. It's my understanding. So, you might reach out to Paolo, Paula, Paula is her name. Paolo. Paolo. And then the other thing is, just so you guys know the process of the board member reimbursement, there's two, and well, let me back up. These are the board action forms that we fill out. You know, Gabe fills them out, but I've just... It's basically for all the funding motions. I'm still not 100% agreeable. We send letters and things necessarily. But as far as the board member reimbursements, I wanted to make it clear that the way they want it is they want a form like this authorizing the reimbursement. So, for example, if it's an operational expense, okay? During our budget, did we approve like a certain operating expense budget with one of these? Because that's what they're explaining. They did, during the budget process, you could allocate a certain... Oh, okay, well, I understand. But that's the first thing. So, they want that, okay? If they can't correlate to that kind of reimbursement, let's say it's like for an event or something, you know, then you're supposed to have a separate motion with a separate vote, V A C, and then a separate motion to reimburse the amount. So, that, I just want to make that clear because I have to provide this documentation.
In other words, just like we did, for example, right now with P M Rs that I did, and you did like that. There needs to be an approval of the expenditure beforehand. Then you make expense. Then you need approval of the reimbursement. So, what goes to the, say, Clark is two votes. You have two sheets. The funding and the approval of the...
Two motions. So, I just want to make that clear to everybody so we, you know... I don't know if we were doing that in the past. I'm sure we were doing fine, but I just, now I'm going, oh, good.
And there are two, two of those funding forms are the ones that you take care of, but there are identical forms for everything else we vote on.
This is a funding form.
No, I mean, I don't mean funding form. I mean a funding vote.
Yeah, you do one for the funding part and one for the approval, authorization.
But what I'm saying is for non-funding votes, we do the same thing, just that you don't, you don't need to worry about those. Secretary does that, does those.
Yeah, so I haven't, I probably have to ask Jafn if I have to retain, like when we do a letter or something, we do one of these sheets, but I...
But that's not a funding item, so it stays with him. That's what I'm saying.
That's how it works.
Yeah. Anything that's funding is with you and he needs to sign it with you.
But it's still being signed off on. That's the problem.
He signs off on the vote form.
But this says tre... Oh. Okay, that's what I meant. Because this says treasurer's signature and second signer's signature.
If it's a funding motion.
Okay, so this would be treasurer slash secretary, perhaps, is what you're saying. And Jafn's not here, but that's what I want to clarify.
The answer, yes. The board action form is the same whether, you know, you have it right.
Okay.
For me, if it wasn't funding, I don't record it. I don't sign it, I don't keep it. That's the...
He fills it out, he tells you the vote right here.
If it has anything to do with financial, then Gabe has one, because he's the secretary that goes in the minutes. You have one, and you have to sign it, retain it, and submit it.
Okay, so basically I should just focus on the funding ones.
Any motion that has a dollar amount, whether it's funding or expensing?
Yeah. Or anything that has to do with the treasurer, because the motion to appoint the treasurer was important as well.
But that's, okay.
And I, you may have asked a question a minute ago. I don't mind you answering.
Yeah.
There is a, you have that on the drive, there is a blanket V A C. So, the process is, you set the budget.
Right.
And then within the budget, the board then sets like the operational and outreach.
Right.
The storage unit, the P O box, the recurring stuff.
Right.
The V A C and its labels specifically, eighteen, nineteen, recurring.
Okay.
It's like recurring.
Yeah, I think I...
So, every time we pay something like constant contact or recurring, that's the V A C you send out.
I got you, great, okay. No problem, I'm good now. So, that's kind of, is there anything else? Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so that's a, kind of trying to get... Oh, go ahead.
Oh, I just said more of a comment.
Yes.
Okay. So, whoever has the card itself, and you were saying that could be the, one of the signers, treasurer and signer?
We haven't voted on that yet.
Could be.
It should be someone who's available...
Right.
To make the payments, because then you don't have people like me having to go get a permit for $800 and be reimbursed. It should be someone who is available to go and use the card. That would, that would be really helpful.
So, that's going to be on the agenda for next...
Perfect, thank you.
So, we'll discuss it.
I heard a rumor towards the end of my term that there may be an opportunity to have a second card. They were, the flexibility and the limitations regarding the card, which were cranked right down, were being loosened. So, there may be an opportunity, if the board chooses it, there may be actually a second card holder.
They didn't hit it all towards that while we were in training.
They mentioned it.
Did they?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Does that might help the situation? Susan's talking about where someone needs to be able to go.
Right.
Might find a...
Okay. Yeah. All right, anything else? I think I've got it. Okay. Item eight. You're going to recruit, well, and before you start, I need to recruit myself, and I want to say why I'm recruiting myself as well. This is, this is an item about the supporting of one of the proposals that are being submitted to the A Q M D. And since I am on the H S Tag, I'm not, I cannot vote on supporting one proposal versus another proposal, so I can't step on that.
Are you ready? What could you explain about the H S Tag?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's the Health Study Technical Advisory Group that the A Q M D has set up and they asked the board to identify two community representatives, and Dr. Mordelet is one of them, and I am the second one. And so, this group is going to proceed with the study as it gets conducted by whoever gets conducted, and provides the community's input to the progress and things on it. So, right now, the project is just in proposal phase. Their R F Ps out, so different entities, I guess, are submitting proposals. So, anybody can ask for, you know, a letter of support from an organization, community members, or stuff like that. So, UCLA team asked us, we would give them a letter of support, and they need it by April 1st, so, which is next Monday. So, it's on the agenda for that, and the letter is in the packet. But because I'm on the H S Tag and I'm recruiting myself, but another reason, because I am, I have a holder position at UCLA, I'm not going to vote in UCLA's benefit, so I will be outside.
One more point of clarification. Who makes the final decision? The H Tag and A Q M D?
No, the H S Tag does not make the decision. It is A Q M D and maybe some technical panel that they have. I don't know. The H S Tag, I don't think the H S Tag is asked to, to kind of vote on any of the proposals they get. I may be wrong. I don't remember from the meeting. Do you remember?
I don't know what is written, but I remember from the dialogue from the very beginning. I asked the questions, so I remember. I wanted to make sure that the, that representation of the H Tag, H S Tag, saw it all the way through,
from R F P design? Right.
All the way through to evaluation and ultimately having some input and picking. The two representatives from A Q M D said the H S Tag would be involved all the way through.
I see. Okay.
Let me add to that because I, that sit on the advisory committee, had first heard of this last night.
First, uh, heard of what?
I will explain the exact timeline, Dr. Mordelet.
I'm just making a statement. Of the R F P, I haven't seen that. And of the response of the R F P by any form of institution.
Nothing has been submitted in response to the R F P.
Well...
Can I explain?
But again, before that discussion, let me say...
Is there a case?
So, we need majority, which is four.
You have six.
We need four.
We need four. No, I can't say they have a discussion.
Okay, so the motion is discussion, possible action to approve the submittal of the proposed letter for the Northern Chamber of Council to South Coast A Q M D in support of the submission of the request for proposal from the team from UCLA for the million-dollar health study assessing exposure to hazardous air pollutants and potential health effects helping Elisa Canyon blowout, exposure reconstruction by a monitoring universe for gunheads. So, to give people some background, on February 8th, 2017, South Cal Gas agreed to pay a total of 8.5 million to South Coast A Q M D, of which 1 million was designated for the South Coast A Q M D-sponsored health study. Now, this is entirely different from the $25 million health study from the set. Okay, this came before, this is a completely different fund of money. The South Coast A Q M D is accepting requests for proposals for implementation of this $1 million health study. UCLA has put together a request for proposal. On Monday, March 25th, Diane Gonzalez phoned me to tell me she and a team of eight other highly qualified professionals from UCLA are submitting a proposal to the South Coast A Q M D to be considered for a million-dollar research study to investigate health impacts of the well rupture at Elisa Canyon. Many of us in Perna Ranch know and trust Diane, the doctoral student guided by Dr. Jarrett from UCLA, who installed particulate matter measuring equipment devices in our yards, mine included, and conducted research during the blowout and after the capping of well S S number 25. Her work culminated in a report entitled, and this is a long one, "A Lisa Canyon Natural Gas Disaster Air Quality Monitoring and Modeling Technical Report: Exposure Modeling, Ambient Monitoring, and Identification of Fugitive Emissions" dated 10/30/2018. Both Diane and Dr. Jarrett have been in this community on our sides doing meaningful research to help unravel the mystery of how and what, to what extent, we have been exposed in this community. UCLA in turn has trusted us by sharing a description of their study with us and seeing if we would like to support it. UCLA thinks enough of our community to tell us about this proposal before it is even submitted. They are under no obligation to do so, but have chosen to do so because they trust us. During Diane's phone call, she relayed to me the aspects of the UCLA team's proposal in that summary in the draft letter. And I'm struck by the comprehensive approach of their strategy, including revealing all data from before, during, and after the blowout, exposure reconstruction, sampling blood for biomarkers of cancer, which is a critical aspect to consider as we are all concerned about long-term cancers, birth outcomes, statistical analysis, and design of a community monitoring plan for both air samples and possibly biosamples that could be used to assess ongoing emissions and their potential health risks. Often, it takes more personal strength to ask for help than to give help. Our community needs help, and this UCLA team is offering us help and is in debt to make $1 million from South Coast A Q M D research as far as it can go. And the team from UCLA has put together a quality proposal. The draft in front of you is whether we want to vote to send a letter of support to the South Coast A Q M D in support of UCLA's proposal. This is not a selection. P R N C does not make that call. I also don't know who else is submitting proposals. No one else has shared that information with us, and they're under no obligation to do so. UCLA chose to do so and to call me as a member of the board because of our previous history with the particulate matter measuring in our backyard and a report that came out with clues. So, the only names on this UCLA study are a proposal. Michael Jarrett, principal investigator Department of Environmental Health Sciences, UCLA, Fielding School of Public Health. Yifan Zhu, co-investigator Department of Environmental Health Sciences, UCLA. Pete Ritz, co-investigator Department of Epidemiology, UCLA. Julia Heck, Department of Epidemiology, UCLA. Sudipo Benjerry, co-investigator Department of Biostatistics, UCLA. Brian Cole, co-investigator Department of Environmental Health Science, UCLA. Iris Di Rosari, recruitment coordinator Department of Epidemiology, UCLA. Diane Gonzalez, project scientist Department of Environmental Sciences, UCLA. Christina LaTette, community engagement coordinator Co-ordinator, Department of Environmental Health Sciences, UCLA. So, I understand also there's a little bit of confusion with Diane Gonzalez and UCLA because a few months ago, they had contacted some people in the community, and she was applying to a, to a different grant, proposal. Nothing to do with this. And that grant proposal, when she decided not to submit, had to have an aspect of Department of Health with it. She decided not to submit it because a lot of people objected to having Department of Health involved at all. That is a completely different submission than the one before you today. So, anyway, a lot of people are going to be doing requests of bids for proposals. I don't know if you guys think a lot of them have contacted us. Again, UCLA chose to contact us probably because they've been working with the board. Whether we vote to do this letter of recommendation or not, everybody continues to put in their bids because we do not select the person who will be ultimately given this million dollars to do the study. That is for South Coast A Q M D, I guess with the assistance of the technical panel. So, this is nothing more than a discussion, and if you want to vote to support this proposal, if you don't, that is fine as well. So, I'd like to open it up for discussion. All right, I have to make a motion first, right?
You just did, I'll second the motion. We can discuss it.
Okay, thank you. So, would we like to do public discussion first? Okay, let's be board first.
All right. So, I have concern with UCLA. One, that, you know, they came into our community previously and they did, they did research and gave, gave house, throughout the whole community, yeah. And personally, and I can say the same thing happened with White's Luxor, where I deployed canisters twice during the blowout. Matter of fact, nine, nine both times. And never once from my legal counsel or from UCLA, never saw anything, anything, you know, I never saw any data or shared any data with the board or even with myself. I, Gabe, did you get data from them?
No, they sent me one piece of paper that made no real sense to it, no explanation, just a bunch of numbers. And how's it, no raw data was given.
They did come out with a file report. Diane did come out with a file report. I just read the name of it.
Okay.
I haven't seen it.
I'd like us to see it for the, for the board once, you know, they've never seen it. They're just...
Okay, so that's your concern is that they didn't communicate really with you?
Well, not just with me, but with the community or with the board itself.
Okay.
Something, something in writing. That's just my, my own personal concern.
Okay.
A question. Sometimes we don't, and it followed to him. Do we know if that's a part of the proposal for them to make sure that their research becomes public and that we won't get access to the final data? Or is that a requirement to consider at that point?
So, this goes back to the South Coast A Q M D, and I would assume they would make that call. I don't know why they wouldn't make it, but... Yeah, yeah. I'm thinking we have to. But the study will go on. You know, because the funding is there. This is part of the settlement with South Cal Gas and A Q M D. And so, the funding is there, the research will go on, you know, the money will be spent.
If they're not, we write this letter or sign this letter, somebody's going to have to fire a study.
Good question.
Susan, through our interviews with UCLA, such type of research projects seem to be very limited, and under the bylaws of the C D S T, they never release a proper information or data. One of the research that they did in the past, and we will approach, and I hope, to see what is the research of our own time was unable to get to the answer.
So, their research regarding...
Yes. The research is, they don't have enough information to back up and support this project.
You're saying this particular project? Or the one that...
This particular project. This particular project.
Okay, so you're saying UCLA does not have... I'm going to give feedback back to Susan. This amount of...
They don't have enough, they don't release the sources and the data.
Oh, release the sources and the data guide.
It's under the state law since 2005. UCLA Research Department, they are a public entity and they must release that. They are not going to do it, this is concerning, but it could be able to attempt if they change their bylaws and that approach to the community.
Okay.
I have the same concerns as David. There was a lot done, I can't say they didn't do any, they did a lot of research, but the research was not ever given to the public and we have not heard about absolutely any of the results. And the fact that we have Dr. Nordele sitting in front of us and he's been more proactive in the community stating there are somewhat of the results that have come out in the past, and I know it's continuing studies right now. If he can possibly place a bid for this, might be a better option.
Oh, absolutely.
Then UCLA doesn't so secretive. I know, I know, I know the staff, they're a great staff, but this might be over their head a little bit on this one, unfortunately.
Yeah, let me clarify, everybody who puts a bid, you know, a bid, a proposal. And I would think the more people that, you know, put in this bid, the better. I'm not on the AQMD, I'm not on the Dr. Nordele or the song on their SS10, I'm not on that. But I would think that they, the more the bet, the more proposals we have, right?
Susan, would you feel comfortable tabling this until you speak to them, to get back to us?
You know, they, they, they say it's due April 1st, so it's tonight or never. Again, if you feel this is too rushed, if it's not of information, I'm only telling you what they told me. If we don't feel that we're comfortable with this, then we go to death.
April 1st?
Yeah.
Is that the cutoff for the RFP?
No, this is the cutoff for when they would like this letter of... And again, it's not a do or die thing, everybody can, you know, submit a proposal. They just asked us, because they have history with us, whether we would like to do a letter. And we're free to do it and we're free not to.
I understand David Turner is a Trojan, another man in UCLA in the first place. I don't think they can nail though, I think for as large an institution as they are, I'm actually, I'm surprised that they weren't, it was so big and they had so much, so much data and scientists are running it versus public affairs folks, but I would almost think we should communicate what if we support this, some kind of additional, either in the letter or additionally going, as part of this, you need to have information as soon as we can, as comprehensive as we can, and avoid the vacuum of information that apparently occurred in the past, but I think very least actually communicated after the... I wonder who else might, either nonprofits, education institutions, might also bid on it.
I'm hoping a lot of people bid on it. Because they, I think they want to be in a position where they can select the best candidates.
It's just like, it's a, they're a fine institution with a tremendous amount of resources and...
Right, especially it's not a small community college, nothing's a big college, but it's not a...
Yeah, and I guess they, yeah, I remember a lot of people were asking for the report and the report did come out, but apparently they didn't publicize it good enough because none of you have been aware that this report came out on October 3rd, 2018. Is that true? Didn't you call it the WIND study?
Correct. It did not come out until October 3rd.
So it did not?
2018, correct.
Correct, that was the WIND study. That's what people refer to as the WIND study. So there is some, there is some knowledge of it coming out here. Because I remember people asking about it again and again.
Susan, ESAM received it from Angela.
Yes, yes.
I filed a public records request app. It was told that, and it was told that it wasn't ready after two years. So the fact that, I want to interject here and I know you're discussing that, is that the Department of Public Health held this document for two years. Two years, the study went on. The WIND study was done when your field was recharged and had very significant scientific data presented, such as fugitive emissions that were occurring while the field was not under pressure. They've never studied it since they reactivated it in late July.
Oh, that was because the equipment had to be taken out to, that the, the, the equipment had to leave.
Right, so the reason that you didn't receive it and no one received it is, as you've said, David, is that we, Public Health hired them as a vendor, which is happening the same year as AQMD is going to be hiring someone, might be UCLA, as a vendor, they control the release, not UCLA, whether it's law or not, which I agree with. But the issue is, they will hold the study and release it if however they need it.
Correct. So is the board finished with comments, we go to other comment?
Please.
Just one formal line, or is... We have cards? We have.
We have cards.
Do we have to go to somewhere? Can I just get a...
I just have to go for it.
I just, um... Okay, say your name, please, for our... I'm sorry, Jane Fowler. I just, I'm happy to hear this discussion here because you're all raising some, you know, concern I have. And, you know, as a community, we hear, know what we've been through with both and, you know, maybe they're trying to do the best, but, you know, maybe not. And so I'm just happy to hear the board speak. Everybody raised my concern and I'm going to say thank you very much.
Okay, Patrick Glick, GW ECK. And there's a lot of information that I heard for the first time. I was trying to find it from the information you placed and that wasn't there. And so I went on the AQMD site this morning and I found the timetable for the selection of the research team that the committee will be looking at proposals in April. And so I was wondering, why did this meeting have to happen today when there's nothing on there that says that, that this, that UCLA or any other group had to submit by April 1st, these letters? And so I'm kind of wondering why, one day noticed that most people didn't even know, I didn't even get an email from this group and I'm on the email list.
I was going to answer your question regarding why is we're having a special meeting? This was really, the special meeting was really based for us as the treasurers and the signer to be acclimated so we can move forward because we worked. So that, everything else kind of fell in sync with that, but this meeting was really to get, to be moving forward financially.
And for new trainee, for the new members and just orientation, just...
Okay, well, that answers that, but why this particular proposal, when this is so important to this community and also the communities of North San Fernando Valley, it's not just Porter Ranch, it's a whole 1.5 million residents who live in the back area. So something like this shouldn't be done in this quick, hasty meeting. And the reason why I'm bringing this up is that on the AQMD RFP, I saw that there's a point system for judging the proposals. And so even though it's only up to five points out of 100, there's still grounding points being given. So why this particular proposal should be getting, whether it's one or up to five grounding points and the other ones not, when they could be perfectly just as fine proposals? And I'm a UCLA grad, I majored in life science and did plenty of research as an upper division, a lot of, you know, taking undergrad and freshman and putting them through a lot of testing. So I know that it's a fine institution, but again, why this particular team and not the other ones? Well, we didn't have even seen these proposals, where are the proposals? They're not online. And I'm pretty good about finding these things. And that really disturbed me that, that, that there's a step to say, okay, we're giving our blessing to, to this particular research team and not the other ones, where they could be just as good or even better. So I don't think that was being very fair. And also, I don't know all of you yet, but I notice, I'm just kind of wondering who's qualified to make that kind of a judgment of this particular research is better than the other. And I'm also kind of wondering, why is this research team, is this research team, UCLA being blessed by Public Health? They've had this kind of connection for the past few years. And so is Public Health, my concern is, is Public Health going to be the gatekeeper of this data collected, just as they were able to redact that WIND study? We didn't get the full report, why not? So this, this is disturbing to me that, that even for a $1 million study, there shouldn't be any of these influences that might keep something out of from being released to the community. So thank you all, go bros.
Hey, my name is Matt Hukugoe, who is a newer member to the president, co-founder of Safe Porter Ranch, a local, only local, non-governmental organization. We're a 501(c)(3) that's been dealing with the gas blowout since before the blowout. So there's a few problems with this, most fundamental one is procedural. Did you guys get my email from Safe Porter Ranch this afternoon? Kind of laid it out, sent it to the entire board, I had to get a response, so it's in your email. This board, Susan herself nominated Dr. Nordele to be the community representative for the AQMD study. And it was passed unanimously by the board back then. So for you guys to go around the representative of the study that you actually elected to represent the study, I think that's like, is your own procedures and your own, and your own policy that's, that's being, you know, bypassed here. So that's just like the fundamental thing. He's, him and ESAM are the representatives, but somehow they're not included, or, well, at least Dr. Nordele's not included, because I don't even know what ESAM knows about this really. So I agree with Patty, let's go onto like the big picture. We don't even know who all the proposals are. How can you, you know, support this one, there may be better ones? And the AQMD is also knows that Dr. Nordele is the representative of this community and he wasn't even contacted about any of this. Okay, right, it's outside of the AQMD, I guess, never mind. So yeah, and UCLA, they were, they're pretty in bed with the health department during the whole study they did, the WIND study that we're calling it. So it concerns me just like Patty, that whole relationship, especially when we haven't seen the whole thread of all the proposals, actually we haven't seen any of them. And, and nothing really personal to Susan, I don't know how many of you have read the study or read the proposal, it's probably pretty thick. And who is qualified to go through that stuff and know it, I don't know, I don't think, Susan, maybe she is, but doesn't matter, we elected him as the representative. That's it, thank you.
I agree with Lollonia. Also, I agree with Matt and Patty. If any of you, I know most of you were at the AQMD meeting with Joe Kay that came here and when we were just starting to talk about what was going to go into the health study and I just, anyone that was here would remember the comments about UCLA, all right? One after another person in this room got up and had the same complaints as all you plus more. No communication, keeping, holding the, holding the document, I don't know who held it for the three years. And then when we get it, it's redacted. So that is just, you know, your community is talking. Your community told our council, we don't want UCLA to really have anything to do with this because of their past behavior. And the second thing is rushing, rushing, I mean, it's not, it's, we're rushing on our first proposal, as you say, there's many coming. And we did all stand up and want Dr. Nordele to be our liaison, our community advocate. So I would think as being voting him in, that you would not even consider this, would table it until he presented something to the community that you could stand behind, like as we voted him in. So I'm just really confused about this whole thing. I want it to be rushed through and that, I also have questions about why that's happening. But anyways, thank you for your time.
Hello, everybody. I just wanted to briefly introduce myself. I'm Jack Faj, and I'm one of the candidates running for city council, currently working in LA City Attorney's Office, I've been in the city for the past 10 years, serving with Mayor's Office, serving as a valley area representative, moved not to work in public courts and for the past, for a couple of years, I've been working in a promoter for the City Attorney's Office with LA PD. Also on the board of Governor for Engineers and Arts Association, which is a day reunion that has endorsed me, as well as I do...
Jack, I'm sorry, we're in a little promotion.
It's a motion.
Oh, sorry.
About this specific, I thought you were going to, I thought you were going to get to it. Yeah, that was public comment, I just thought it was not on the agenda. Sorry about that. I was giving them a little more time, I thought maybe... Okay, anybody else?
Save Jack.
And what else?
And current I am a board member. I find, sorry, Tom.
Who called you?
Line keeper, hey, there's Starbucks! I would tell you, as a, as a former board member, I find this motion in very bad taste. If I was sitting out there with you, I would, if my comments say it, I find this motion in very bad taste. The board is generally very open and deliberate in bringing in its elected representatives to share not only with the board, but with the community, that listen to the community and then act based on the community's wishes. This process is not that. And I get that Diane reached out, I get they're on a deadline, so I understand that urgency. What I would have liked from my board is that that was taken, said, sorry, we have to pump the brakes, that's not how we operate. And you cannot properly evaluate a study, and most of the sentiments have been... unless there's a medical doctor on, on the board. And I don't know Lori very well, Iran, I don't know very well, I know you were not a medical doctor. No one here is qualified to really make...
But I could be.
You could be. Nobody up there can truly make a educated decision that yes, we should support this study. At the very least, this board should have brought in its two elected community representatives, ESAM and Dr. Nordele, who would have had time to digest this and make a presentation to you and the community for then a comprehensive discussion and a decision whether or not to support. That hasn't happened, therefore I would like to see this board not take further action. And if downstream wants to, wants to put their input in, whether the figure study might be, it is, it's grounding points or not, that process where the two members who this board elected in November and December of last year, they come in and present. And then, and then discussion and action possibly. Thank you.
Hi, Craig Galanti, for the record. You know, I think all the sentiments, sentiments here are right on. And for those of you that are new to the board, here's the minutes, if I may, here are the minutes from that meeting that nominated Dr. Nordele, by the way, you handed it to him. And then ESAM, the subsequent meeting, was, was nominated to the HS10. Look, I know Diane, I've spoken to her, she's wonderful, but we do not know if this is indeed the right study for us. We're in the middle of a response to an RFP process. For anyone to advocate for one study over another is just not, is just not sound judgment at this point. What I also want to talk about, which I think is critically important, especially to the new board members, is this is a very slippery slope. Because this board cannot unilaterally act on behalf of the entire community without a well-fedded process. I mean, it's quite possible if we didn't catch wind of this, because it wasn't emailed out, it wasn't very well broadcast, none of us would be here to voice these concerns. The new members on this board wouldn't be fully informed of what the community thinks about something like this. So I don't like the quickness that this is coming together. I think this could have been handled in a much more open format. We do have representatives that were elected to deal with this exact issue. They are qualified, Nordele certainly is qualified from biomonitoring and all the other things that are described, to be able to advocate for the community like he has and be able to offer as counsel on, this is my first choice, this is a good backup. That's not happening here. I'm very concerned this board is ever used in that way by anyone when it comes to a matter this serious as our health. This is, as we all know, this is a catastrophe of unprecedented proportions. This is serious business. And it should not leverage this board to get a checkmark and say yes to the, to the community. Do not put yourselves in that position. Because what if it goes south? They're going to say, oh, this board said yes. Don't do that. Push back to the community, force a town hall format so that all questions and answers are addressed in a true community forum. This, this disaster goes well beyond Safe, I'm sorry. This, this disaster goes well beyond Porter Ranch, as we all know. And we don't know if this is the best study. The last thing I really want to, this has been a fairly well-functioning board, but the role truly should be advocacy and representation of the community back into government and regulatory agencies, not the other way around. This board should not be used as a vehicle to get what Public Health, AQMD, UCLA, or anybody else wants this community to agree to. I am vehemently opposed to that, I hope you support it as a community, thank you.
Hi, I'm Board Director Lori Avosin. I don't have much more to say because it seems like most of my feelings have been already brought up, but I do agree with the concerns that were brought up by board members and by the public that's spoken.
You pay us?
Just for the record, I'm not Dr. Nordele.
No, she wrote that down.
Impossible.
And I got into SC too, so just to let you know, so I'm not biased. Question for you, Susan. Why has, and I know Diane, I know Mike, I've talked to him and interfaced with him quite a bit, why April 1st, why are they claiming to you April 1st, you have a mandate?
They told me that was a deadline and again, I have no personal interest in this.
They're internal.
I am...
No, I'm not saying you, I'm just trying to find out some information, why April 1st.
That's what they told me and I assume they have what they need to get their people in and...
Look, I will tell you, I think that UCLA have anybody, and I've reviewed this for the last three years at grade, grade depth. I know what the WIND study is, I can quote you pages. I've read the 4,700 pages that the latest study put out and found every document and every misquoting that they had. I've read every document that Public Health has put out. UCLA is tied to Public Health. Now, this might, they might not have to function within that, but at the Cal grant that they were going to, the federal grant they were looking for, they had to. So, all of that said, there's significant, the other thing... the other thing I looked at when I read your letters, I looked at it and I said, "Gosh, that's very ambitious for them to do." Now, I sat in the only single one meeting that AQMD had. Isam was to my one side, Cyrus Ringman was-- Larry J. Kay sat by here. And bottom line, they were going to produce and do the monitor. But everybody said-- all of the people on the phones, the other people said, they said, "We don't have enough money to do all of these things." But yet, as you're stating in this letter, they're gonna do all of this. And it's like, wow, how are you gonna do that with a million dollars? Second, the million dollars in this is looking to be-- quote me if I'm wrong, I think you quoted it in your letter, Susan-- that this is almost a pilot for what's gonna happen with the 25 million. So is that gonna put us on a compass path that maybe if we're going in the wrong direction, is going to take us there? And if Public Health is involved in the lack of trust that we have with Public Health, are they gonna use the 25 million to bury this issue for these people in the community? It's a possibility. I would highly recommend it. It sounds like even as an advisory member, that I will not have privy to this because I didn't even know the RFP went out. I haven't seen a copy of it. I tried to take them on a different path early, which was the CVC study. I wrote a four-page proposal and I never heard back and contacted every advisory party that is on it. And I didn't hear back from one of them. Why? So are they on their own path? To possibly take this out of state would be my most high recommendation. To take the politics out of it, what's happening in Cal, who knows? But to take it out of state and make it work for you, which is-- in goal is the people, the health of the people. And we do have some interesting things coming out that I think that you guys are gonna wanna hear about. We have been pursuing the CVC studies. And I'm in court with Quest Diagnostics because they will not turn over information. I have to file a lawsuit. What's that about? Why do I have to file a lawsuit on Quest Diagnostics when the other lab just gives the information over we've been analyzing? And we're working with Catherine Burkle. So there's other avenues to pursue, even though UCLA might be right on. If they can do all of that for you, fantastic. But I can guarantee you, you will not own it. And you possibly will not see it. Okay? Any questions of me?
We're good. What's the vote on this?
Well, another possibility would be for me to amend the motion to table it.
That was mine.
I wanna vote ye in your name.
Susan, can I ask a question real quick?
Yes.
Are we gonna have the actual proposal of what they're going to do? If so, I would recommend, if I could look at that and then come back and talk to you, that might be a good idea.
I think if we table it, that's a possibility. I don't know what all the deadlines are. And I don't know who else is going to be doing proposals.
We have a long time, right? With people turning in.
Yeah, it sounds like we should table.
Do we know when the RFP deadline is at all? We don't know.
I don't know, and I sit on the committee, so--
Susan, do you? Have you read the RFP?
So why don't we-- I'm gonna amend my motion. Or-- Do I amend it to-- I wanna table this motion. Then do we not wanna table it? Okay. I need to table this motion. I need a second.
A second. Thank you, Lori.
Okay, so then B is gonna call. To table the motion.
All right, Brad B is absent. Susan--
Yes.
Ah, there's no motion. Table it.
We gave this with a discussion. There's no motion to discuss, it's a discussion. So I don't believe there's an active motion that requires a vote. And tabling, I don't believe requires a motion either.
Right, we just tabled it.
Oh, so we're not-- so we're not-- So we're tabling it, so we don't have to vote to table it.
I think you probably look around and go, "Does no one wanna make a motion?" Okay. And then you go on.
So the motion dies.
Dr. Nordelet, are you gonna submit?
Well, nobody's asked me, but I don't even know--
I just did.
Well, you did.
Nobody asked anybody. People make the recommendations to do their proposals.
I think there'll be a conflict of interest because I sit on this. But it's very interesting, as you stated, it's like, I don't know what we are going to know as the advisory members. I don't know if we're gonna be able to review these proposals. And maybe Isam can just answer as a general question. Are we as members gonna be able to review the proposals coming in?
We can.
We tabled. Oh, Starbucks.
Present. Starbucks. Where's my dinner?
Can I say something?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Time, let's go put the timer on.
We are a public body. Anybody who comes to us asking for a letter of support, we can't pick and choose. Doesn't matter. This whole exercise is just to summon a matter. Because anyone who comes to us that is of any reputable organization, where it's not offensive to the city, we have to agree to say, "Yes, we support your proposal." We're not in a position to pick and choose. The only reason we're doing this is they're the ones who came and said, "Hey, would you give us a letter of support?" That's all it is.
Sorry.
You're a private entity person, I get that.
Who decides reputable?
Doesn't matter. Listen, doesn't matter. We are a public group. We have to be equal opportunity provider. That's all it is. I don't disagree with you that if I were in a private position, I would have a very different perspective. But this is not that. But anyway, okay, that's fine.
What if a socially terrible, irresponsible legitimate agency comes to you and says, "We'd like your endorsement to run this white supremacist rally"?
As I said.
And we're not--
As I said.
You're gonna say, "Yeah, we approve it because we're Republican." No, Isam, I mean, that's an exaggeration, Lori, but that's the question.
You have to decide who is reputable. It puts the decision-making power on you.
I am not deciding who is reputable. I am deciding-- if there was any-- the way this body works, if there's any controversy about or any issue that we are concerned about, we would bring it to the city and the city will tell us whether there's a problem with it or not. That is the only measure we have to make that distinction. So let me be clear on--
So you don't look at anything, you're just gonna take everything to that. So what you should do then is maybe contact all of the other parties who are going to submit and support them too if they request them.
If they come to us to request it, we would do that. We're not gonna go out and say, "Who else?" By the way, we don't know who's submitting any of that.
The point started my question.
The point is, someone came to us and asked for it, we said, "Sure, we'll give you a letter of support." Apparently, that's not gonna happen and we quit.
Wait, this board is letter of support provider?
That's what it sounds like.
I'm sorry?
This board is letter of support provider. Isam, that's what you just said. That's unreasonable. By the way, the slippery slope that I was pointing out, this is it. This is the slippery slope. You guys have to really push back harder. Don't just endorse anything.
But let me be clear, all the requests will go forward, whether they have our endorsement or not, all the requests for bits go forward.
It is not an endorsement.
Right.
Nobody's endorsing--
It's a letter of recommendation. That's an endorsement.
My point is, they're all gonna go forward.
But let me go back to my first question that I asked when you walked in.
Why don't we have that conversation outside the confines of the meeting? So I don't screw up the meeting even further than I already did. Can we do that?
Sure. Give me a call. Thank you.
What?
I said, "Thank you for hearing my comment."
Oh, public comment?
Only to subscribe.
We wish we had a gentleman here that wanted to comment on a non-agenda item.
Thank you. I'll lighten up the atmosphere. My name is Jack Kayajin. I'm running for city council in this district. I am a resident of La Plata Hills. I'm married, I have a one-year-old son. I work for the City Attorney's Office, I've worked in the Department of Public Works, and in the Mayor's Office. I'm heavily involved in the Valley. I serve on many non-profficial boards. I'm also elected Board of Governor for a labor union and have a strong backing behind me. And I just wanna come out here and introduce myself. That, you know, I'm out here. I have a full-time job, I am your public servant, working in the city right now. So it's a little bit difficult. I'm gonna be taking some time off to go get out there, you know, walk door-to-door, you know, and get the word out. My top priorities are, one is public safety. With burglaries on the rise, I have a plan to, you know, address that. I wanna improve police response time. And the way I'm gonna do that is by stop decriminalizing-- stop decriminalizing the homelessness and bring in the city departments to really address the issues that we have. Because right now, even the homeless are coming from Chatsworth, from what I'm hearing. And we gotta do something about it. Now, we really gotta be efficient with LAPD because we don't have too many of them out there. And we need to improve our police response standards. I have a family, and three of you all have families. And we all care about, you know, our little ones and, you know, protecting them. So that's one. I wanna tap into all the resources and I'm the candidate that has that experience. I'm very familiar with all the divisions, sections, because I represent about 5,500 of the city employees from all the city departments. We're the most important labor union in the city. And second, I'm the only candidate that's taking a stand on the trash holler program, the ReCQ. And so my father owned a small shoe store and, you know, those trash fees are skyrocketing, for some, and even tripled. And I wanna reverse that because I wanna improve the business policies that we currently have. This also affects multi-housing right now in the city. And so the landlords are basically, they're not gonna take on the burden. They're gonna pass on that burden, a 3% increase a year to tenants. And with the homeless problem that we have right now, we're gonna be going in circles. Because a lot of the families out there, they cannot afford to pay that 3%. And then here again, you have, you know, homeless back on the street. So I am the candidate that has a concrete plan to hit the ground running. I'm doing pretty good, I'm raising a lot of money, I'm getting a lot of grassroots support. Talk to endorsements that I got. One is L U S D board members, Gosh Carlson, who covers all the schools in this area. He's 110% behind me. I have a strong base with parent centers because I have a track record of reducing crimes around schools. And I have done that through making significant infrastructural improvements around schools, such as adding lives, improving transportation, resurfing streets, getting those bulky items picked up, shoes cut off, EWP lines, graffiti removed, and also showing a soft presence of police. And also establishing a strong relationship between school police and LAPD. Because often when it comes down to these two departments, they're kind of like this. You know, LAPD is like, "Oh, I got, you know, school police out there, they'll cover it." And then school police is like, "No, let LAPD cover it." So I do have those strong relationships. And as a matter of fact, the second endorsement-- major endorsement I got is L U S D Chief of Police, Steve Zipperman, who's also a retired LAPD captain.
Can we wrap it up, please?
That's it. I'm good to go. All right. Thank you.
Item nine. I may share a point. The way the process works is every two years, when we have an election, we have what we call a new board. That's when new officers get dissolved, community chairs get dissolved. And that's not laid out in our bylaws specifically that way. But that's how when the new board comes on, that's how the city does it down there. So we're gonna clarify that. But for now, our bylaws are clear on the appointments. So it is my job to appoint community chairs. And I've talked to a member of you. And I've sent out an email to ask for input and interest in you and where your desires are. So for that, I'm going to ask the following. I'm gonna ask Susan to continue on the Sustainability Committee if she so agrees.
Yes.
Okay. David, would you be good to stay on the Land Use Committee?
Yes.
Okay. Jason, would you take on the Beautification Committee? You wanna think about it and then answer another time?
Yeah.
Okay. Lori, would you take on the Outreach Committee?
Yes.
Miron, would you take on the Schools and Education Committee?
So do.
Okay. There's-- the leftovers are the Safety and Traffic and the Homelessness Solutions. And I know-- I was gonna ask Randy to take on the Homelessness Solutions. And I wanted to talk to you and Assad about how to-- you know, where to go with the Safety and Traffic. But he's not here, so I'm gonna hold off on that.
Remember that before, the board member that's very near and dear.
I'm sorry?
I was on that board as not a member that's near and dear.
Bylaws, we don't have elections, committee options, because we don't have elections. I didn't hear what you said about the bylaws. I'm gonna take the rules and bylaws. When an election happens, yes, that is how the cycle goes. But there is also a possibility that we may put together a standing rule or ultimately put it in the bylaws, that committees may have a one-year term and then get, you know, a new term every year. But we're not there now and we'll see if we're going that direction. But that is a possibility. So the process from here is, I would recommend that every chair has, you know, conversations with other board members and talk about, you know-- ultimately, you'd like to have a maximum of three board members on a committee. We can't have four because that breaks-- that's the majority of a quorum. So it has to be no more than three. Committees can also have stakeholders as members. And so we-- according to our bylaws, all stakeholders are welcome to come and join committees as they wish. So it is really stakeholder-focused. The way Dunn would like to see committees engaged in the community. So they would like to see as many stakeholders engaged as possible. That means this committee is connected with the community quite a bit. So I encourage you to feel free as a chair to reach out to any stakeholder in the community and entice them to come and participate, maybe come attend, be part of discussion. Maybe they wanna be members or not, that's really-- there's no formalization at this point of that membership from a stakeholder. So just keep that in mind. Right now, our bylaws are not clear on that. The-- we are still supposed to-- this board is supposed to develop policies for bringing in stakeholder members. And it never happened from the very beginning of the bylaws, so we need to move away from that. But until now, this is how I understand the process to be. Yes, David?
I just wanted to agree with you. But one of the things that if you're going to speak to stakeholders, let them know that it's a great stepping point for them to come onto the board. So, and that's pretty much how I came on the board because I came on a committee and then it was natural. So a lot of people are very intimidated to get involved. But if they come and if they get involved where, you know, as committees, we have meetings. You know, some meetings are monthly, but most meetings are supposed to be either every other or even quarterly. But, you know, if you get too involved, you don't over-- be too aggressive with the stakeholders. They just ease it in slowly, they want to be more, they want to get involved.
Yeah, it's up to them how much they want to engage and put their time in, so. Okay? And Miron, just keep in mind, we call it education in schools intentionally. It's not the schools in education. And the idea is that think outside just the confines of school education. There are public library education classes, there is-- There are public library education classes, there's YMCA education classes, anything that is related to art, warming, art, music, dance, whatever it is, if we can bring that class format or education format to the community under this committee, that qualifies under Education and Schools. So, so that's why broadening your reach into stakeholders for people that are not just looking for, you know, whether it's related to a school or one or two schools in the community, it's education, it could be a senior education class, it could be anything. So keep that in mind.
Philly High School up here, quarter.
So nobody assigned to Safety and Traffic, nobody assigned to homelessness, and Jason may be forgiven?
I can't say, I can't assign if the person is not here, because I have confirmation.
But so...
I don't have time to commute, I just assigned the chair. And chair, yeah, so, so that's, so I just want to have a conversation with Randy and Assad, so that would have to happen, that's going to have to happen probably on the April 10th. And for the homelessness, until Randy's here, I can't make that.
So pretty much April 10th, actually.
All right, any other questions? Wendy, you want to?
Let's do it the next day, you know, so.
Give me an answer, okay?
All right. Item ten? Jason?
All right. Motion to approve funding and authorize treasurer to hire a bookkeeper at the cost not to exceed $350 per month.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, any public comments? Any board discussion?
I don't expect it to be this much, but what I did figure is that, you know, in the worst-case scenario, I, it's approximately $35.
So we talked and made it from Apple One.
Yeah, Apple One, they quoted 32 something, so in case they, you know, and I figured it could potentially be maybe two hours a week, perhaps, if we're preparing for stuff or, you know, so it could be up to 10 hours in a month, but I don't expect it to be that high.
I guess we have a minimum that we must give a certain amount of time.
No.
Okay.
We are using.
Yeah, whenever we need them, so, you know, I want them to go back through some of the old stuff that we have and make sure they're prepared for them. There's an annual audit, I want to get them up to speed on all the paperwork and everything once I get an handle on it, so that's pretty much. And I have to figure out exactly what role they can have, because they can't access the portal, you know, there's limited things that a bookkeeper can do, so that may limit.
Any question, any comment from the board?
All right, Brandy, absent. Susan?
Yes.
David?
David.
Jason?
Absent.
Make the motion, abstaining.
Why am I abstaining? Because middle.
It's a board vote, there's nothing controversial about it.
Okay. Yes.
Becky is absent. David Lasher? Lori? Assad is absent. Gabriel, you guys, Esam?
Yes.
Motion passed.
And go item 11. Jason?
All right. Motion to approve up to $400 for purchasing food and supplies and be co-sponsor at the April 13 Lime Hill Canyon Earth Day Clean Up Event. So this is a flyer that they generated, but they, we didn't approve being a co-sponsor, so I couldn't get our name on here yet, but I did talk to the council office, and they're going to get our name on the flyer. But the event, just for those who haven't been to it before, is a really fun event we do cleaning up Lime Hill Canyon, which runs north from Ranali, but also runs south. So two teams go, and there's usually about 50 people or so, but last year we did the food at the end, we had bar for us, so we'll do something similar, but there's also some budgeting to buy. We're planning on painting, you know, the picking tables, the, some of the posts and stuff, the benches, the trash cans.
Concrete.
Well, the graffiti on the concrete, so that'll be for, you know, some of the other colors of paint for those things, like the greens and the browns and all that. And then also, what's good too is the Boy Scouts Trip One is going to be helping us fix the benches that are all dilapidated and falling apart, so that's...
It would be critical that our name is on that flyer.
Yeah.
Otherwise, this is, this would be not the way we're supposed to spend our...
Yeah. No, I understand.
So I'll second the motion, and acknowledge that for next minute, school comes out, which is fixed.
Comments? Any board question? No, call the vote.
All right, Brandy, absent. Susan?
Yes.
David Bailey?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Miron?
Yes.
Becky is absent. David Lasher?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Assad is absent. Gabriel, you guys, Esam?
Yes.
I'm motion passed.
All right. And now, further items on the agenda, without objection, we...